Can I have your attention, please? I'd like to call the meeting to order. Good evening. Welcome to the Lowell Planner Board for Monday, May 7, 2018. Tonight, we do have three public hearings on the matter. Well, pre-application, I should say, then a preliminary matter, then an ordinance amendment. So we'll start off with the acceptance of the minutes, which would be on April 19, 2018. Any of the board members have any corrections on the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a comment that Jared did a real exceptional job on these minutes. I just couldn't believe it.
Yeah, we had them ready the next day after the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So with that, I make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Motion is made by Mr. Fishette. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you vote yes, the minutes are approved. In favor and against. So we have a pre-application site plan review for 78-90 Lakeview Ave. The following individual has requested the planning board provide a preliminary review of their proposed project at the address listed above. This is not a public hearing. The planning board will render no decision related to the site plan review, nor guarantees any future decision, whether positive or negative, of any project that receives pre-application review. So the address indicated as above, the project to redevelop the existing building and lot into a new Domino's restaurant with more than 14 parking spaces. The zoning is the UMU, which is the urban mixed use, and this matter will require site plan approval in the future if it comes back. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Brian Malisi with Whitman and Bingham Associates, here representing GDS Enterprises. With me tonight also is Brian Wilburner from Wilburner Construction, who hopefully will be the general contractor on the job. If it's okay with the chair, I'd just like to approach that easel and throw up a board very quickly.
Absolutely, sure. Just put on an angle a little bit so that the public can see as well, sir. Thank you. Sure. That looks fine. Yeah. And you can take either microphone you like, if you point out from there, okay?
Like you said, the property is located at 78 to 90 Princeton, yeah, Lakeview Ave. It's right at the intersection where Lakeview Ave and VFW come to an intersection just to the north of Bridge Street. It's the old, the former building of Larry's Comics, and there was a service station there as well. It is in the UMU, urban mixed-use district, so therefore the restaurant use is allowed. Currently, the site plan that you have in front of you is the one that we had submitted, and hopefully the one that we plan on submitting after this pre-application hearing. One of the things that we would like to point out and get some input from the board, whether it be tonight, or whether just to kind of let you guys know what would be coming down the pike, is when we do submit for our site plan review, we're also going to be submitting for a special permit in regards to the parking. This type of use, a restaurant use, we do not qualify for a "takeout," quote-unquote, "takeout" restaurant. So we fall under the restaurant use, which requires one spot for every 50 square feet. Our restaurant is just, it's about 3,600 square feet, and, actually, I'm sorry, 2,800 square feet, and if you did the math, we need about 58 parking spaces. The zoning ordinance for the Sea of Lowell allows this board, the planning board, to reduce that parking factor for uses in the UMU zone to up to, or down to, one spot for every 500 square feet. It used to be in charge of the zoning, the ZBA, however, recently, I'm not exactly sure how long ago, but they've put the planning board as the approving authority for that. So some quick numbers. What we have in the, in our site plan is we show 19 spaces. And currently, with the, with the amount of building, or the amount of restaurant we have, it would come down to a calculation. We have one space for every 152 square feet. So we're well under that one per 500 square feet that we are allowed. We did meet with Christine and staff earlier on when we were developing the plan, and I think we were fortunate enough to get a little bit of input from the outgoing city engineer before he, out he went. And one of the things is, our original plan, while it's very similar to the layout we had here, we had two-way in and two-way out on both egresses. We do meet the dimensional standards for, for that. However, Nick had said that, he suggested that maybe because of the proximity of the curb cuts and the egresses, that we limited to one way in, one way out, which we have done that. So the westerly entrance, if you will, would be the, would be the in, and we would come around in the U shape and use the easterly entrance as the exit. The plan shows a dumpster location conveniently located so that the dumpster, the trucks could pull right in, be able to dump, and just back up just a little bit and maneuver. We do have one handicap spot, one handicap parking spot per the zoning code, per ADA, and that fluorescent yellow areas that you see on the site plan there is really some of the proposed sidewalks and how we're going to tie into the existing sidewalks along Lakeview Ave. We did receive some staff comments. We do have to go in front of the Conservation Commission. We are within some of the flood plan. We have a grading scheme. I know it's not the purview of this board, however, we do have a grading scheme that we think will satisfy the Conservation Commission. We have a stormwater plan worked out. Existing services, we're going to be using the existing services to the existing building, both water and sewer, so we don't think we have to increase any of those. When, when you do see it for the full-blown site plan, we will have landscaping plans. We will be able to meet the landscaping requirements from the site plan review and from the zoning code. I know I was very quick and brief, but that's really the proposal. I would point out that GDS Enterprises currently owns three Domino's in the city. One over on Mammoth Road, one on Chempstead Street, which he recently permitted, and one on Bridge Street. The one on Bridge Street, Bridge Street will be closing and moving to this location here. I do have some input on some of the parking at those other, other facilities, if the board is interested now. I can let you know that, otherwise I would...
Sure, if you have it, why don't you share it with us?
Yep. So the Mammoth Road Domino's that went in, the building size is 1,600 square feet, and they had, and that's just the restaurant. They have offices upstairs, and they have 11 spaces. They were required to have 20, but because there was a public parking within 400 feet of that facility, they were able to reduce it by 50%, and they provided 11. The Chempstead Street Domino's is a little bit bigger at almost 2,400 square feet. They were required to have 47 spaces, but they went and petitioned the zoning board of appeals back when they were the approving authority, and they were allowed to put in 36 spaces. And I will say, if you've ever gone by there, the spaces are very underutilized. There's always open spaces. So we do think, we, we do think we have enough parking. We think it's laid out professionally, that it's going to work. We hopefully, when the time comes, this board will agree with us. And that's all I have for right now, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anybody else who's with you tonight and wants to speak as well, sir?
Excuse me?
Is there anybody else who you brought with you tonight and want to speak as well?
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay, I'll turn it over to the board members. So I have one question. So I see the parking lot's one color, then you have the, what is it, you're going to call it orange color?
That's, that's the building. I'm sorry. That's the existing building.
Yeah.
So the brownish, yep.
So then over to the right, it says the existing building number 78.
Yep.
And your project says the address is 78 to 90.
So 78 is actually the building address. 90, Lakeview, is actually where the parking lot is. It's just happens to have two separate addresses.
So the white lot that says 78 on that, is that part of your proposal?
Not, not for this proposal. We're taking half the building and upfitting it to a restaurant.
Okay, all right. So that, to the white, on the right of the orange, is not part of this plan? Okay.
Correct.
All right. Because I saw that number 78, so that's why I had that question. Okay. So that's just the building numbers? So the orange is part 78 as well? Is that what it is?
Correct. The building itself is 78 Lakeview. 90 is where the parking lot is. The next, it was a separate parcel.
Gotcha.
And that's where the parking's going.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay. Mr. Snetsky, have any questions?
Yeah, just, just so I understand. The existing building is where the comic store was and the garage?
Correct.
Is that building going to remain, or are you going to tear down that building and build a new building?
No, the building is going to remain.
Uh-huh.
We're going to outfit, or, you know, outfit the inside of the interior and the exterior of the building as well, but there's no new buildings going. We're going to, we're going to outfit the existing building.
And you're saying only a portion of it is going to be used for the Domino's at this point?
Correct. Correct.
Is that primarily where the comics were?
It's actually where the service station was. If you remember the building, if you're looking at it from Lakeview, there's an overhead door where you would bring the vehicles in for service. That portion will be the Domino's, to the right of the, where the garage was.
Are those actually two separate units, or is it, is it one building with two separate units to it?
Yeah. It's, it's actually one fairly large building. With this project, they are going to put a party wall in and kind of separate the two, the two uses of the building, but it is basically one building. It's kind of a maze of hallways and whatnot when you get in there.
And is there any plan or any intention to use the remaining building for some purpose?
At this point, I don't know what it is. The owner doesn't know. I'm sure he's going to, but at this point in time, I couldn't tell you what he's going to use that for.
Would that, with the subsequent use, maybe there's a question for Christine, a subsequent use of that remaining portion of the building affect things like parking requirements and so forth?
Potentially, depending on the use, and then what the parking requirement is, and then we do have a shared parking table, but it all depends on what that use will be.
And if I may, based on the, the complete size of the building, the 6,000 square feet, with our 19 spaces, based on that number, we would have one space for every 316 square feet. So I just would like to point that out, that we're still under that 500 square foot, you know, one spot per 500 square foot, but I couldn't do the calculation right now on, on the use because we don't know what it's going to be.
So you're, out of the 6,000, you're going to use approximately 2,800, and the rest would require whatever permitting might be required for that use at whatever time that might come about?
We very well could be back in front of this board for site plan review for change in use, or for that portion of the building. Correct.
In general, I, you know, I don't see a problem with this proposal, and I, you know, from my observation of the Domino's sites that I've, I drive by or whatever, you know, I get the sense that, you know, there's not a large eat-in clientele, and therefore, you know, I would not have a problem with the proposed parking. You know, those would be my thoughts on the, on the...
I may have, should have maybe pointed that out. I don't do a whole lot of eating at Domino's, but it seems to be you go in, you wait, you pick it up, and you leave. There are some tables for some sit-down eat-in dining, but most of it is a fairly transient type of, type of food service.
That's my observation, that it's, the type of restaurant it is, is not primarily, you know, an eat-in type of environment, which would require the, you know, higher ratio of parking. Those are my only comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any of the, any of the board members have any questions?
I have one.
Mr. Lockhart?
Chairman, you're going to get a certain amount of walk-in traffic here, I would expect, and it's a busy area. Can you just step us through what pedestrian amenities you have built into the design here to, to provide their safety? I mean, you know, crossing Lakeview Avenue and potentially the VFW Highway is...
Anyone behind you, just make sure the green light on, sir, okay? Thank you.
Test, test. This is just a blow-up of the architectural plans that were included in the package. And this is face such that the VFW Highway is going to be to the left, and Lakeview Ave is up here to the right. The two means of egress are going to be here for pedestrian, for clientele. The overhead door in this location will remain, but obviously just for some deliveries and whatnot. I want to go back to the site plan. Those two egresses are labeled here and labeled here. And so what we do is, the reason why I wanted to kind of highlight that the sidewalk system on Lakeview Ave is we're going to connect our sidewalk system right to that. So anybody coming down, coming down the sidewalk on Lakeview Ave will be able to, by foot, access here. There won't be any fences or gates or anything to that effect. To be perfectly honest, we haven't looked at really any, any crosswalks yet. I can certainly do that prior to filing the complete site plan approval.
I would think that that should be part of it. I mean, it's a very busy area, and I think you need to consider...
No, I think it's a good idea. We can, we'd be able to match it up with some of our sidewalks and whatnot, and make sure it's kind of contrary with what's going on on the other side of Lakeview Ave.
Right.
I would agree with that.
All I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fishette?
Thank you. Just looking at the, and this is more granular, and we get to the, the actual application, but on the, on the dumpster location, and I'm not quite sure what size dumpster you're looking to use, and what type of vehicle will be picking that up, but have, have you tested that radius for, how, how will they exit the site when they, they'll make that turn?
Yeah, they can. We actually kind of opened up the radius over here for them to be able to come in, and they'd be able to exit.
You took that into consideration when you designed that turn?
We did.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think conceptually, I have no issue with that. I think actually we'll address that, that, that area up a little bit at this point. And hopefully, from the VFW side too, you'll make that as visually pleasing as possible, because it's, that's a highly visible location, coming through the intersection and going right by there.
And I know this is a pre-application hearing, but the, the architectures are still kind of being tweaked. However, the ones in your package do show, you know, all four elevations and, and some of the branding that's going to go on. So they are planning on kind of sprucing up the, all the sides, so.
And then, and then on the, on the side where, on Lakeview Ave, again, it's more of a, and I know it's more of a takeout and type of establishment, but you're really right on the sidewalk. It's a neighborhood business district right around there. So you really, we did that with the CVS. We really wanted to make a connectivity to the, to the neighborhood. So you really want to have that into consideration when you're designing the connection to, to the neighborhood, I think, from, from that side. So you, you've got two things going on. You've got a, a major roadway going by on one side that you really want to be, I think, visually pleasing, and then on the Lakeview Ave side, you really want to be accommodating and, and really a connection to the neighborhood. So just bear that in mind with the final design. And to Mr. Sinenski's comment, I think that's why Domino's has the insurance when you pick up your pizza if it gets damaged. So it's primarily takeout is what I think of with Domino's. So, good. Thank you.
Mr. Malavich?
Yeah, I, I don't have any real problems with this, this proposal, but I, you're running a inside restaurant that's going to people who can walk in and take out their food. Are you going to, are Domino's going to have that kind of service where they deliver to the car parked in the parking lot?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that, and I will find that out.
Yeah, I mean, it really doesn't change much, but if they're guaranteeing the pizza, they may as well walk it out to the car.
That's a good point. And I, I will find that out for when we, when we come through.
And you said that the four facades, four facades are going to be treated, the whole building, 6,000 square feet. I really have no other, just landscaping is the one thing I want to see.
Yep. There'll be a full landscaping plan in the complete set. We have started to lay it out with the number of trees and the number of, you know, square footage requirements, and we do meet that, but there will be a plan that you guys can review absolutely.
Yeah, as many trees as you could put in the lot would be great.
And so I would kind of include it an island here in order to meet those regulations. So this will be tree, there'll be a couple of, you know, shade trees along here. The budding building is fairly close over here, so I don't think we can put a lot of large trees, but we are going to put a green screen in here, just to put some headlight.
Is it going to be fenced in?
It is fenced in now. I'm not exactly sure whether that's going to remain. I can, we will, I'll get those answers.
I'm curious to see what, what the fencing situation is going to be, whether it's, and what type of fencing you're going to replace what's there now, or if you're taking it all out. You probably want to secure the lot some way.
Exactly. And so we'll figure out, and it'll be, put it on the proposal.
Definitely along VFW Highway. You don't want people trying to walk...
Matter of fact, that fence may be, may be belonging to the state as it is anyway, so most of it is not on our property, so, yeah.
Probably does.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have two brief questions. So I, I take it you'll do takeout deliveries as well, like most Domino's do?
Correct.
I mean, I mean, car deliveries?
Correct.
And call it in, and they'll drive it to them?
Yep.
So would you put that car that comes up, pull that up front, or do you put it in the parking lot spot, or?
What we've done is when we developed the, the layout here, there's two parallel parking spots that we found room for here. While we don't have them labeled now, more than likely, it's kind of a perfect spot for the drivers. They'd be able to come in here, you know, access the sidewalk, and then they, they can go. They're not labeled specifically for that yet. We, we may have to do that, just trying to keep as much...
The way you have that one car, you know, that has a Domino's sign on the roof that they can pull up and pick up and do anything.
Yeah.
And then just one other question about the dumpster. I mean, I know as long as you have the turning radius, you should be okay, but either that, if you had any concerns on that, you could always have the dumpster pick up, you know, on operational hours that the store's not open. And then you've got plenty of room to make your pickup and delivery.
Yep.
I mean, I know those pizza places, especially when you have colleges nearby, stay open pretty late, but, you know, you probably have a better chance of picking them up early in the morning than you would at nighttime service. So if there's any comments on that, I'm sure you have flexibility on, you know, to pick up hours of your dumpster, so.
We could look into that as well.
Yeah, you know, I mean, that way you say, you know, come in the morning, because you let, let people eat pizza at 9:00 a.m., then you will let at 2:00 a.m. But besides that, I have no further comments. Anybody else have any further comments? Anybody here to see me that has any questions on this project? I know it's not a public hearing, but if people have comments, I'd be entertained. Have any, okay. The board members have any more follow-up? No? So...
I have one question. What about neighborhood use of parking overnight? Is that something you're going to control? Whether you want it or not, it doesn't matter to me, but there will be a tendency by the neighbors to park in there, especially in the wintertime.
That's a good question. And that's my kind of little part of the proposal, is some of the security block, and we're going to gate and segregate this during hours of night, and it didn't even open up for neighbors. I would talk to the door, and you definitely have that answer when we come back.
Sometimes.
Also, also, snow storage is going to be removed?
Yeah, but a little bit, obviously, there's not much. We can have some area for some storage, but like anything else, once it gets fully, it's going to have to remove.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
So how long would a development like this take to develop? Because I, I noticed the sign said Domino's coming soon, on the fence on the VFW. So I'm just curious how soon it's coming, so.
They're kind of getting ready to go, those architectural plans, I don't know, pricing.
That's quick.
Pre-application, and I know on the lead there, we're gonna get the application back into this board as soon as we can, with some of his questions here. So now he may, so I think he's gonna be wanting to get under construction as soon as possible. It's probably about, I'd say, four to five months, or five minutes construction process.
Probably early fall.
And even on, you know, your lot, if you had to, I mean, close at night, you can get by with a chain link fence or something, just, you know, it's easy enough. I mean, you see that a lot of places in the city now, just, I mean, you see, even churches do it now, so people don't just, you know, pull in there, so that's a simple remedy if you're concerned about people flooding your parking lot at night, so. And obviously, you wanna keep it well lit for your own safety concerns, from the end of the summer and everything else.
The lighting, yeah. The lighting, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Well, thank you, and good luck. We wish you well. Thank you.
Right back, Tom.
Be soon.
But it was only a little driveway?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for, yeah. So if you wanna set up Matt, fine.
Have you been over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a street, I mean, it's not...
Yeah, let's see, it's wide, it's, I guess it was in 24.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. The applicant has requested a waiver to move the street toward it permanently. It's a city, yeah, well.
Yeah. Looks like they'll just pave it.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, the next matter is a preliminary subdivision on 27 Stratum Street. The board will hear requests for a preliminary review of a proposed subdivision at the above listed address. The applicant proposes to subdivide an existing 20,224 square foot lot and build out Stratum Street, and to extent necessary, to provide additional two new lots that would be created by the subdivision. Will we open the applicant, please?
Yes, good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering and Surveying, located here in Lowell. I'm here this evening representing the Daly Group, also of Lowell, Mass., and with us here this evening is David Daly, representing that group here as well. As you know, Mr. Daly has developed many properties in Lowell, and his intention this evening is to go through the preliminary subdivision application process for a pre-review with the planning board for the extension of Stratum Street, which is existing as a private way right now. The acceptance line on that private way is here, and it's off of Morton Street, it intersects with Morton Street. There's a Pan Am Railroad, railroad track to the south of the property, and there's a proprietors of the Lowell Cemetery here, as well as the city Lowell property to the north. Stratum Street is here, and if you notice, I gave each of you an exhibit plan showing Stratum Street on an aerial, and it shows that essentially this ends at the railroad. So the railroad is depressed down into the ground approximately 15 feet, maybe 20 feet. So the likelihood of this area being further extended is, in my mind, unlikely because of that. There's a new bridge here over the actual railroad tract here that was recently improved. I'm not sure of the year, but it is relatively new. There's an existing paved roadway here, there's an existing dwelling here, which is 27 Stratum Street, which is located on 21,714 square feet. The grades go down in this direction here from Stratum Street, and existing right now is Stratum Street being 20 feet wide. We have sewer and water on Stratum Street, and like I said, an existing dwelling. We're gonna propose to, we're proposing to improve Stratum Street, the same 20, 20 feet of width that's existing there now, and we're gonna extend the roadway to this point here, approximately 350 lineal feet. We're gonna further subdivide the property, the existing property, into a total of three lots. The existing dwelling will remain. I know there was a comment in the comments that came through with DPD related to the side setback to an existing porch that would be non-compliant. We're gonna take that porch out, so that we'll be fully compliant, and then we'll be proposing two fully compliant lots off of Stratum Street. The pavement that'll extend here is shown in gray. We're gonna propose a sheet drainage to a rain garden drainage system, which is essentially an open drainage system with an emergency overflow, outflow here at an infiltration basin. A detail of that cross-section is here. Sidewalk, 20 feet of pavement with a 2% cross slope, and then there's a p-stone pre-treatment trench next to the roadway, and then it goes over a grass filter strip to an additional swell. I've, I got the chance to meet with the review agent from the sewer department today before the meeting, and we had a very productive meeting. They were in full support of the drainage concept, so that was, that was good. And additionally, on Friday, we received some comments back from the fire department for this emergency T-turnaround that we'll be proposing, similar to what we did on Berry Road. And preliminarily, right now, the fire chief is okay with this T-turnaround. He just had some concerns on the other side of the road. He thought there might have been, this might have been a retaining wall, but it's not a retaining wall. And the roadway's 2.5% in slope, so we feel confident that the fire chief, Casey, will be okay with this T-turnaround. We're gonna be requesting three waivers from the planning board. One would be the pavement width. We'll be proposing 20 feet to the 28 that's required. We feel as though as long as the fire department is okay for safety reasons to get in and out of the site, then that that could be supported. We're gonna be requesting an additional waiver to just have one sidewalk on the side of the street here, and that'll extend up to Morton Street. And one of the comments that came back from DPD, the Department of Planning and Development, was to just make sure that the cross, the handicap ramp on the other side of Morton Street is just improved to be handicap standards, which we're okay with. And the other is the emergency turnaround. Typically, there would be a cul-de-sac if you were designing a new subdivision on a raw piece of land, but we'll be providing that emergency turnaround with this T-turnaround configuration. We're gonna be proposing these two new dwellings with this home here. As you know, Mr. Daly does a really top-quality job when constructing his homes. These dwellings are gonna have overhangs, which is nice. It's got some gable end structures off the front. These will have two-car garages, so essentially each one of these houses will have four parking And as you can see, it's gonna, I think, be a nice added look to the existing roadway We received the comments from Planning and Development, which, I don't know if you wanted to go through all of them, but we're in agreement with all of the comments. The, one thing I can say is, is that there was a comment related to some of the natural features in the area.
I brought a photo.
And in this photo, you can see that there are some mature trees along the northerly side of the roadway. And what we can do is, if it makes sense to work with Planning and Development, to see if we can save some of those trees, we most certainly can do that. And there's a possibility, there's a mature tree that, it's hard to see, it's right here in front of the existing house, and there's a possibility that we could actually save that tree as well. And if needed, if for whatever reason those trees were to come down, we could actually add some street trees along the improved roadway. We're gonna be putting in an additional street light. We'll work with the planning department in terms of the design of that street light to make sure it meets the city's standards. And the utilities are fairly straightforward. We're gonna be, when I met with the sewer department today, we're gonna do two separate low-pressure sewer pumps that'll each individually go to the sewer main hole that's located here. The water line will be extended down Stratum Street, and there'll be a flushing hydrant at the end of the street for that water line extension. Like I said, the proposed dwellings and the lots will meet all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance for frontage area and all the other setback requirements. And I can answer any questions from the board.
Thank you. Anybody else on behalf of the applicant wanna speak? No?
Mr. Chairman, may I? Oh.
Anybody here this evening, this evening who wants to speak in favor of the subdivision? Anybody in favor of the subdivision? Anybody wanna speak? Anybody wanting to speak in opposition of the subdivision?
In opposition?
In opposition? Okay, I'll turn over to the board members at this time.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, just a question, Matt, because you said you were in possession of the comments from DPD, and you were in agreement with all the comments, so I just will take it to number 12. And it kind of goes hand in hand with the engineer's comments and Jerry Department's comment, and even though the fire department, you know, I looked at this, I mean, certainly it was not, you know, they did mention it does not fully comply with code, and I think if you, I mean, just from a consideration of the high-end homes that you're building, not to have, you know, an easement to have to deal with on the property would probably be something that would be much more attractive to somebody willing to buy those homes, too. So I just, curious as to, you know, you said you were in agreement with everything on that sheet, so that caught my attention.
Yeah, completely understood. You know, we get comments from different departments, and I felt as though the, that primary issue would be under the jurisdiction or more weight from the fire department, because that's a safety issue related to turning a vehicle around. It's a little bit difficult to do it at the end of the road if you were to keep extending it. The nice thing is, is when you do the T-turnaround on the lot line, it can be incorporated utilizing the existing road for the T-turnaround. I can say that we will have four parking spaces for each house, so I don't think there is gonna be a big problem with it being, you know, used by visitors because of the four spaces. But again, we can work with the planning department on this, but I'm getting comments from planning department, engineering, and the fire department, and I thought the fire department would be the, would weigh in more on that specific aspect because of the public safety portion of it.
So then if I heard you correctly when you met with the fire department, because in their comments, they talked about no parking signs, are you saying now they don't feel that's necessary?
No, we would put all the typical requirements of no parking, violators would be towed, we would line stripe the area as well, like we proposed on Berry Road, and whatever the fire department feels is necessary to be incorporated into that T-turnaround, we would provide.
So just the concern is, is that, I mean, from an enforcement perspective, if you can accommodate a turnaround that doesn't require, you know, an easement and who's responsible for it, and then having no parking, who's responsible to enforce that, you know, I just think from a practical perspective, and I think, again, who am I, but even from a marketing perspective on the homes, not having that as an easement on the property with, as a matter of fact, those halls, that could be green space for the houses rather than, you know, a hot-top area for turnaround, so. Something to think about, working with DPD.
Sure.
And give that, I would ask that you give that some real consideration.
Sure.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Malavich?
This is gonna be a city street?
Yes, it is, sir.
The city's gonna plow this street?
Yes.
Who's gonna be, make sure that that turnaround is plowed?
The city.
Is that agreeable to the city?
It's my understanding that it will be in the end, just like Berry Road was when we did the T-turnaround there. The city is accepting Berry Road as well as the T-turnaround. And the other thing, too, is this is a much smaller area to take care of instead of creating a conventional full cul-de-sac also. So there's less road that has to be maintained in the long run.
I understand that, but a contract plow that is doing this neighborhood, who's gonna be aware that there is a turnaround there that must be cleaned? It's gonna fall between the cracks, the way I see it. It's gonna be, the house at the end is gonna blow this snow from the driveway right onto that spot, and I think it's a major issue for the safety of that street in the wintertime to make sure that turnaround is there. And I'd like to hear from the city that they're gonna do it.
Sure, and, you know, if the T-turnaround needs to be extended beyond the homes, we will do that. We're just trying to, you know, work through the process. We'll make sure we address that comment and look at the protocol to making sure that the T-turnaround is maintained. the T-turnaround is maintained.
I think it makes a little sense to have it at the end of the road from a plowing perspective, and that they could put rods in the ground, and someone could... GPW could say to that, the drivers of that area, make sure that turnaround is clear.
And we'd probably, if needed or required, we'd install something more permanent than just a flexible rod.
Yeah.
When we first went over this design with the Planning Department, or it came back from Engineering, they just wanted that end extended more so the snow wouldn't build up back in front of that driveway. And we extended the roadway, I believe, 20 feet extra for what they were asking for, so that when they plow that road to the end, that if there is any buildup, there would be plenty of room for that driveway. And that's what we came up with, was this extended portion at the end of that roadway.
I agree with my fellow board member that that turnaround, as is shown there between the two new houses, doesn't make much sense to me. I think it's rots with problems. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Melovich. Mr. Snetsky?
In line with some of the comments made by my colleagues here, I would just recommend that you come to a meeting of the minds between DPD, Engineering, and the Fire Department.
Yeah.
And, you know, I would be more than willing to defer to the collective decision, but it sounds like there should be some additional discussion of that.
Sure.
And like I say, just come to a meeting of the minds on that. Other than that, you know, perhaps the end of the street is the best, but again, I'll defer to the experts on that one.
Okay.
And other than that, I don't see any particular issues with this development.
Sure. Thank you.
I would include public works for the street plowing situation.
Anything else, Dick?
No, that's all I have at this time.
Richard?
I have a couple of questions on the Building Department had some comments relating to drainage.
Yes.
See that potential of drainage issues for the neighbor at 984 Lawrence Street?
Yep.
Can you address that?
Yeah. We printed the International Building Code that he's citing, so we have that comment. We'll make sure we comply with that. I brought it up at the meeting with the Sewer Department that's reviewing all the drainage, and we'll make sure that we're in compliance to all the state and federal regulations related to that.
All right, good. And on the comment sheet, item number nine, the engineer's office offered comments specifically regarding the proposed E1 grinder pump.
Yep.
And it goes on with additional recommendations. Can you clarify that?
I can. Again, I spoke with the Sewer Department specifically about that comment today, and they recommended that we do two separate E1 grinder pumps, each connected to that existing sewer manhole. So we'll make sure we comply with the sewer requirements for those pumps.
All right, so there's no need for any kind of a homeowners association?
No, I don't... No.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I know we've seen this project once before, and then it didn't come back the second time. So we have... We are familiar with the site. Haven't been up there and walked it several times, and as recently as yesterday morning. But I have the same question, basically, that the board members have about putting that... The turnaround access. I mean, planning staff mentioned they weren't really happy for it, and actually, you have to ask for a wave on that. The Fire Department just says, you know, it's not fully complying with the code, but they're okay with the width of the street. And then the Building Department also says they'd like to see the turnaround at the end of the street. I really don't think the city can plow that for two reasons. Each one of those lots is a separate piece of lot, private residence, and they're gonna have an easement on the property. So therefore, the city has no right to come on the property. You're giving us the whole 70... It's not public land. It's private. So you don't... The city's not gonna touch it. So now you have the burden between the two homeowners, which one's gonna plow it out to make sure it's compliant for the Fire Department? One guy goes to plow it for winter, the other guy doesn't? Is she gonna do it? If he doesn't, what happens? You know, so I don't see the cities untouched that. I mean, it's private land. They have no right to go on there. I mean, the subdivision deals with the road. That turnaround is not part of the road. It's on the private property. Right?
Yeah, but there would be an easement.
Yeah.
Granted to the city.
But the city doesn't have to accept the easement. It's like a regular gift. If you wanna give me something, if I don't want it, you can write down you're giving it to me if there's no acceptance.
Yes, I under...
Doesn't have to take it.
I under...
So now you're asking the city, will you please come and plow? What if they said, I want you to plow both my driveways while you're at it, 'cause I'm gonna give you an easement? Legally, that's the way I'm thinking on it. I think they're nice houses. I think it's a beautiful development.
Yeah.
I just think putting that in there legally, in my opinion as a lawyer, clogs the whole thing. I mean, you're creating problems for two people, two neighborhoods, beautiful neighborhood. I mean, plenty of trees in the neighborhood. I'm not worried about that. It's a nice area, but you're creating... If neighbors don't go along, it's not gonna turn into a nice neighborhood, because you're creating a potential problem for these people, and they buy your house to say, I have to maintain this and turn it around, and if I don't do my share, now we have to block off everything else? I just think that... I mean, unless there's a real dire reason why you can't put it on the other road, the Fire Department mentions it, planning staff mentions it, Building Department mentioned it, five planning board members mentioned it, and I'll rest my case on that.
We'll make sure we speak with everybody about it.
I just think it's easier for you to clean the whole thing right up, and it'd be a beautiful development. That's my personal opinion. You know, unless you say you came to the end, it was a strict drop-off, and a big reason. I know it does slope down in the back, so when you push all this snow, it has plenty of places to go, or even when you go further. But I mean, you know, when you have nice, single-family homes and putting easements on there for a turnaround, where you have the rest of the length of the road to go a little further and clean it up, you know, even Jerry said marketable reasons, but, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, three staff comments at it, and all board members commented on it. Besides that, it was the... I think that was the only negative comment you had from anybody. So I'd give that some consideration.
Yeah, I mean...
You don't see where you're gonna get the city to come on there. Because now, like most plows do by mistake, they tear out part of their grass. They're gonna be calling the city, come back and clean up my lawn. Clean up my lawn. Be seated. You know, it's gonna... Legally, you know, be an attorney for, you know, 38 years. This is the stuff we see on a daily basis. Why create it if you don't have to?
Yeah, we'll see what we can do about extending that a little further and creating some sort of turnaround at the end.
You know, then...
It's just a little tight down there.
I know. I mean, you know, and then, you know, it's open, it's needed, it's clean. I'm not even worried about the porch on the other house, to be honest with you, from my opinion. I mean, I think the porch is fine, but, you know, I know you have a setback requirement, but when you try to regulate all that, to me, that's the minimum as compared to that turnaround.
We'll make sure we come up with a different configuration.
You know, I mean, I think it'll be two beautiful houses when you're done if you don't have to put that turn in there. Because I don't think the city's gonna plow, and then you have problems. Now, they have to maintain it, private people. I mean, I don't agree with shared driveways, right? Nobody allows them in the city, but if they come in and miss a requirement, we give them to you. This, you're asking for a wave on. This, we don't have to give it to you. That's the only problem when they have one, that turnaround access, so...
And what we'll probably end up doing is extending that further, creating a T-turnaround at the end.
Sure. And instead of doing a cul-de-sac, do a T?
And then maybe we'll clip into that corner.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
The Fire Department will be happy with that.
What might end up happening would just come into this corner a little bit there and...
Yeah, I think it would matter to do it. It would really make it nice.
And then if that...
Because it's really secluded land back there, you know? I mean, when you go up there, I know the ballpark's to the right, you know? I've been there years ago with my kids and stuff, but to the left, it's a nice, quiet area, you know?
Because the other thing we could do, too... Sorry for interrupting you.
No, no problem.
The other thing we could do is, we're trying to make sure that, you know, we get the setbacks so we can get these houses in.
Yep.
It's a little tight there, but I think what we can do, too, is try to do something there, and if the frontage was reduced slightly, just to make sure it wasn't over that, what would it be, 75 feet? There were 15-foot reduction off the 90 feet that's required, then you could do a special permit on that lot at the end if you cut into the frontage there to accommodate that.
I mean, you know, on streets that typically are dead end, I think you have more success rate requests than something like that.
Yeah.
That's a wide-open public street going into Main Street.
Especially where the... Down at the end there, the rest of that right-of-way, I don't think is ever gonna get utilized.
But as you said earlier, you're not gonna have any problem with that railroad thing that was there before, right? I mean, that's away from the property, you have no...
The railroad's 20... You know...
You said something that was buried in the back area?
No, there's no... There's just a railroad that runs next to the property.
Yeah.
I think it's down like 20 feet down.
Yeah, I remember you said it was down a bit.
Yeah.
Okay. It's 20 feet down in the rear, right? Okay.
Yeah. And that's where all the drainage is going, down to the railroad.
I know it slopes back, and then at the end of the street, it slopes down, too, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does.
Back to the left of the other...
Yeah.
The last house on the left.
Yeah, it's gonna be... The runoff's gonna get greatly reduced from what would be going on to the cemetery property.
Any of the board members have any further questions? I know this is here just for the preliminary subdivision.
So we appreciate all your time.
Okay. So I think you need a vote for this, all right? On the preliminary, whether we accept it or deny it, so you can come forward back with the final plan? I'll make a motion that we accept the preliminary subdivision plan.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Chairman, do we wanna just, with the caveat that the applicant worked with DPD and appropriate staff regarding the turnaround?
Sure. I mean, I think they get the concern on it, whether we add that or not, I don't think it makes a difference when they come back for the definitive subdivision.
We heard your lobby plate.
What was that?
We heard your lobby plate.
Just wanna have it in the decision.
I think, you know, for the preliminary, I don't think it makes a difference whether we put the comment in, but definitive?
Not a question, you can't.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna make a difference one way or another, but I'll leave it as is.
If the maker of the motion would like to put that in there, I think it would be appropriate.
Okay. So I'll amend it as amended by the vice chair. Motion's made in the second still?
Second still.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck. Wish you well.
Yeah, thank you.
Nice neighborhood up there.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you very much. Good luck with it, Mr. Daley. You're welcome.
Nice project.
We'll see you in a few weeks. Thank you, Matt. You're welcome. Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have an ordinance for medical... Marijuana amendments, excuse me. In accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 5, the Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to the ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinance of City of Lowell, Massachusetts, with respect to Chapter 290, therefore entitled "Zoning." Amending Article 2 definitions, Article 5 special regulations, adding Section 7.10 marijuana, Article 12 table of uses, and amending Sections 11.4.2 and 6.1.4 that deal with site plan review and parking regulations respectively. So there's been a... Let's see. We received a couple of correspondences on this. This letter was addressed to our senior planner, Christine McCall. Dear Christine, at the meeting of the City Council that was held on April 10, 2018, the following ordinance was read and referred to the Planning Board for a report and recommendation for May 7th in a public hearing. Will be back before the City Council at 7:00 p.m. on May 15, which is a week from tomorrow night. We have a copy of the ordinance. We also have another letter, which was by Eric Slager from the Director of Development Services. The attached ordinance would submit to the Planning Board the attached amendment to the Lowell zoning ordinance, which would regulate marijuana use in the city of Lowell both for medical and recreational purposes. These amendments have been reviewed by the zoning subcommittee. And we have a list of one, two, three, four, five amendments that was requested to us for zoning amendment. Christine, do you wanna give us an update from staff on basically what the amendment details, instead of me just reading it? Anybody saying what happened?
Mr. Chairman, are you referring to the memo I sent you today, or just in general?
No, just the ordinance in itself. I mean, I know it's basically the... We're gonna be bringing up retail marijuana, so this basically is how... What zones it could go into, where it's allowed.
Sure. So our zoning's gonna update both adult-use marijuana and medical. We don't explicitly mention medical marijuana in our ordinance as it exists now, so we do create a definition for it. We are proposing to allow all four marijuana uses that we've established: cultivation, testing, medical treatment center, which it would be a dispensary, and a recreational dispensary for adult use. We're proposing that in the regional retail, all of those uses be by special permit with the Planning Board. The high-rise commercial, we are going to allow cultivation, testing, medical treatment center, again, by special permit by the Planning Board. Office park, same thing, all four uses, special permit with the Planning Board. And we're going to allow, in the light industrial and general industrial, cultivation and testing by right. According to this ordinance, all proposed new marijuana uses will require site plan review, and then depending on that use table, if a special permit's required, you will review that. So we did include definitions for, like I mentioned, just marijuana uses in general, and then we broke it down into the four. Testing, which would be if an establishment wanted to come in and do research, sort of help track seed to sale. We don't think there'll be a big market for that, but we did wanna include it. Cultivation is obvious. We are not distinguishing between medical and recreational for cultivation and testing. You can do both. You can do one. You can do the other. It's sort of up to the proponent in terms of zoning. Then we do distinguish between recreational and medical dispensaries. We do... We're sort of... We were concerned about clustering, so we did try to be thoughtful about 1,000-square-foot distances. We did not want to have co-location of medical and recreational dispensaries on the same site. However, we did make note to make special exception for existing medical dispensaries that were in operation prior to July 1 of 2017, which sort of reflects, mirrors what the state requirement is. The proposed special regulations that we sort of... We put forward for you to review is just giving the city review power to make sure we understand what type of business is gonna be there, how it's gonna operate, is it gonna be safe, how does it fit within the land uses of the surrounding neighborhood, just to give the board sort of a timeline process. When they apply with the state, during that portion, they will have to get a host community agreement with the city. And we're... The city's currently working on what that process is gonna look like, how the city's going to decide when to execute a host agreement and when not. Then when the license... I'm not sure if it's a full license or a provisional license is issued by the state. Then they would come and apply in front of the land use... In front of the Planning Board. So by the time you get an application, it will have already been vetted by the City Manager's Office, and however she decides to do that process. We'll have an executed host agreement, and we'll have a license from the state. You are still empowered to deny special permits, even though it's been through that process. And so we tried to set it up to get as much information to you as possible to help you make that decision. That's sort of where we are.
Okay, thank you. So this is a matter for us to make a recommendation to the council that's gonna have a full public hearing next week. Anybody here this evening who wanna speak in regards to the ordinance? Anybody want to speak about the ordinance? No? Board members have any questions about the ordinance or recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, if I may just... To the revisions or the amendments that...
Anybody here this evening who want to speak in regards to the ordinance? Anybody want to speak about the ordinance? No? Board members have any questions about the ordinance or recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, if I may just, to the revisions or the amendments that we received earlier today and the onset of the meeting, just under that 7.10.5, number four, I know it was, it was somewhat detailed in the original ordinance, and I would concur with the amendment in part because, and I actually took copies for all of the members just to have, I think it's just, it's a good opportunity to kind of discuss some of the challenges with this.
Thank you.
Those of you that know me know I come from the banking world, and one of the concerns with these facilities is the fact that it is difficult from a banking perspective for them to do business because it still is a federal offense. And I just highlighted, this was actually an article in American Banker, and it really highlights, and it's just for, for the members to read at their, their leisure and for DPD, but I think it is important to have some sort of security measure, at least some review from the police department, and, and I know there was some attempt to try to capture that into the zoning ordinance, but I think it was recognized that needs to be really separate from the zoning ordinance. And one of the things that is of grave concern is that because it's difficult to find banking services, it has become very much a cash business in some respects, and it's been an issue across the country, and it has been a safety issue dealing with, with the cash at these locations. So this goes into a lot of detail, and that is, I believe primarily what, by making that item number four really more of a police matter rather than a zoning matter, I think is appropriate, because there are some, some measures that need to be taken into account beyond the zoning. And that would be my, my comment, Mr. Chairman, other than I think the provisions that are in here, they follow very much the state provisions. The citizen planner program actually put out some material, which was very good, the Cannabis Control Commission kind of outlines from the state perspective what's required, and I thought that was an interesting read as well beyond this, because it really is a process that, as Christine outlined, for, for a facility to become licensed, and, and again, this is to address it from a, from a zoning perspective, so. The only other question I have is regarding Section 5 in the, regarding the identifying the 500 feet from a public or private elementary school, middle school, secondary school, and really that's the state requirement that's, that's already been identified, but then we go on to say, or college serving a student population where any of the student population is under 21. And the, I guess the only question I would have is just clarification on, as we've gone to come into this, academic building or dormitory, and just for clarification, is it, is it meant to be a, an academic building or to incorporate the dormitories as well? I just, I just think it might be best to even clarify that if it was just an academic building, but I would just, I would just throw that out there as a suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fischette. Any other board members have any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Snetsky?
My only comments would be that, you know, obviously, we as a city are required to address this, and the only things that I would want to see done is that it be reasonable and appropriate, both for applicants and, and for the welfare of the city. So this, I understand this has been vetted by staff, it's been vetted by the city council, it's been vetted by the city solicitor, so at this point, you know, I would defer it to them as having, you know, thoroughly researched and developed these, this ordinance, and would support it on that basis.
Any other board members? Richard, any questions?
I don't have any questions, I just make a comment regarding the documentation that was presented to us. I think it's very comprehensive and well-done, including, just to point out the, some additional requirements, the performance standards, things like that are, it's well-spelled out. I think the more information that can be presented to us, the better off we are, and Christine has alluded to that, and I'm comfortable.
All right, thank you. Bob, any questions?
The only thing I could say is that it seems as if this is appropriate, and I agree with Mr. Snetsky that as long as, assuming the city has done its due diligence in creating this ordinance for approval, you know, I'm not a technician, so I, I think we ought to approve it and see where it goes from there.
Okay. By looking through it, I don't have many questions, I just had one comment on the co-location, and that would be number C. The simultaneous operation of a medical marijuana dispensary and adult-use recreational dispensary on the same side of a building is strictly prohibited. Me personally, I don't see a problem if you have a medical marijuana business and you put a recreational marijuana business on the same building. You know, you're selling the same, I mean, you're dealing with the same product, well, this on the same site. If, for example, if the city is going to limit how many permits go out to how many recreational dispensaries, then if you already have a medical marijuana dispensary, that's one less site that's going to be dealing with marijuana. So if the city wants to cut back on the use of the medical marijuana in the recreational dispensary, then if you allow them two on the same site, you eliminate future sites being developed for recreational dispensary. So personally, I don't have a problem putting on the same site. I mean, if you already have the medical marijuana, everything's already built, all set up, and somebody wants to add in the recreational, it's on the site and everything's there, I personally don't see a problem with that, so.
Yes, I just had a quick question. My name is Adrian Dean, I'm an attorney.
Can we have your name and address for record, please?
Sure, I'm actually a resident of Drakett.
Sure, just name and, name and address, no matter where you live in the country, you can still speak at our planning board.
594 Merrimack Avenue.
Thank you, and your name, please?
Adrian Dean.
Thank you.
Yes. Has the city enacted a bylaw yet addressing the number of recreational marijuana facilities that will be permitted?
What I, what I understand is that will be addressed by the city council.
Thank you.
That's not before we're as witness to zoning, but I believe what they're going to do is take up a couple issues. One is, I'd be, how many are they going to do?
Mm-hmm.
And two, I know the other issue is how they're going to tax it, because I know by the state, if you read the state rules and regulations, which are pretty comprehensive, it gives the flexibility what the state can do percentage-wise for how much each city can charge.
Right.
The state can charge so much, the city can charge so much, and what they're trying to do by regulating that is by setting the tax, then therefore they're trying to control it. Some of the argument was they didn't want it too high, because then people would go bite off other people off the street illegally. So if you, if you make it too high for the city and state to get it, then people aren't going to use the recreational, they're going to bite off somebody else. That's what the arguments that were argued before the state when they were passing it, but yeah, how many they do, and for the tax of it, I think is a city council question. Christine, you know, is that correct, that they'll be, they'll be before the council as well, is that part of it, or just this?
My understanding is they're going to limit the number of dispensaries on, take it up Tuesday night when they take up everything else. That was the last discussion, but I haven't seen it as to form, so I'm not sure what the final version is. Is that a public meeting Tuesday?
Yeah. It'll be the city council meeting, a week from tomorrow night at 7:00. So there'll be this public, so this ordinance, we just only make a recommendation on this.
Great.
Sometimes we put comments down. They usually don't concern our comments too often. Usually when, last time we did it, I made a comment and they kind of snubbed it up pretty quickly, but that's up to them.
I guess while I'm still up here, I think I have an older version of the ordinance, the proposed ordinance. The co-location of marijuana and tobacco retailing, that's still in there, right?
Yeah, on this, number six, co-location?
Yeah, six A and B.
I was referring to number C, but go ahead, ma'am. Yes, which part?
Oh, I just wanted to confirm that was still in there, I'm not sure how old my draft is, so.
Yeah, so I just had the question about what, you know, if you put on one site, say, for example, like, say, say if they're limited to, I don't know, maybe 10, for example. So if you have a medical one, and you add the recreational one, so now, you're down to nine, where now you still have eight recreational ones. So if they're trying to cut back how many are going to be used, if they put them on the same site, they're accomplishing less buildings dealing with marijuana in the city.
Is that the city's goal?
I mean, that's the way I look at it, but, you know, because I'm saying, if you have medical marijuana, you have the whole product, you have everything lined up, everything's on site. It's like, you know, whether you're selling, you know, if you're selling cars, you know, whether they're used or new, and you sell them on the same lot, you sell them both, but.
I will, I will say that I resided in Colorado for about a year and a half, and it was not uncommon to see door-to-door medical and retail owned by the same.
Yeah.
And it didn't, I mean, it didn't create any sort of nuisance having the two of them together.
I noticed, I mean, I know our state had looked to a lot of the other states to try to draft some guidelines, especially the states that already had it in effect.
Yeah, I mean, it's so different everywhere, I mean, Colorado is.
And I know the same as Colorado, as here in Massachusetts, each city or town can vote it up or down if they want it. I mean, we're mandated to have it in the city because the city of Lowell voted for
Right.
By over 60%.
Wow.
If the city Lowell voted against it, then we wouldn't have to have this ordinance.
Then none of us would be here talking about this.
Since the city Lowell voted, I mean, the people in the city Lowell voted, that's why we have, because we raised the same question, why do we get in other towns now? Because constantly you look in the paper, well, the town's just totally banned it.
Right.
And then first, a lot of them put the moratorium into effect to find out what was going on until they get more information, and then slowly, they've been going forward.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting, I've been, so I work in this space, and I've gone around to, well, I've been following Drakett because I'm a resident, Shirley, Dunstable, Carlisle, difficult issue for everybody. They, the planning boards have tried to enact moratoriums, and if they've been voted down, then it's really up to the planning board or selectmen to come up with what they think would be acceptable to the public, so it's definitely been tough.
Because what happened in the moratorium is if you say you couldn't have it, then more people could do it in their house, and more people could grow more in their house.
Interesting.
So they couldn't, they couldn't restrict what the people are doing in their own home.
That's a great argument, I'll have to bring that up.
That's why the moratorium came into effect. So the, so the argument was, if you're not going to do it, then everybody's going to grow it in their house, and then.
Yeah.
They regulate it that way. I mean, right now, for the state, if you grow marijuana on your property, it has to be where it cannot be seen, okay, through a window, and I read this closely, because I'm a clerk magistrate, and we have these areas, even by telescopic vision, they can't look through you, my basement window, and if they see a plant, I can get a civil ticket.
Right.
So you can't just grow it out in your backyard.
Yes, so that'll be certainly interesting.
What happened with the moratorium, a lot of people are going to say, well, then I'm going to grow on my own property, and that's why the town started coming around the moratorium, once they got more information on it.
Is, is cultivation permitted by right anywhere?
I think it's.
Yes, in the light industrial and general industrial.
Yeah.
And it is also my understanding that the city council is not interested in limiting those numbers.
Yeah, yeah. So that should be the last page, ma'am, on the thing where it says, see what it says, do you have the last page of the ordinance? See what it has, starts off SSF and all that, all those S's are those of all the residential, and then until you get to the end, LI, is light industrial.
Got it.
You know, and then you have other types of area where it's allowed.
Very good.
And most of the residential areas, you can see where it's retail, is by planning board, all the residential areas, you'll see an N, which would be no, so even the planning board couldn't put it in those areas. And then you'd have the cultivation across the top, the testing, the medical treatment, then the recreational, that's the four down below, so you have that four-line chart. So at the far right, you see some of those, yes.
Very helpful.
And then some of them would be, by planning board, would be the PB.
Excellent, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes?
I have a question too, Christina, Mr. Lanier, being an attorney.
Can you have, can you have your name and address for record, sir?
Mr. Ed Weezer, Mansion Drive Lowell, Mass.
Thank you.
And Mr. Fischette, you had a question that I'd like to clarify. I happen to have a light industrial piece of property that abuts the dorms, and I've been approached before schooling and classrooms came in, before this was already in the works, where it was put into vision here of banning that, my particular piece of property from these dorms, on one of the pieces that I own. And I said, how can you, how can you just come and do that? You have to, I still think it's a 500-foot barrier on different things with the, with the LI, with the cultivation and the testing, correct? And I believe that when the, when the classrooms came into effect, it also affected that piece of property on special permitting, where before, it wasn't really special permitting for any of that, didn't need it, if you, if you checked some of the zoning on there. And what they had come and done is, there was light industrial on the dorms itself before, and they came in and they changed it to institutional, but it accommodated them and the people from the university, but it's not very well accommodating us as being business owners around there where we put under restrictions. And I just wanted to see if there's any type of, you being a lawyer, that I hope we can work this out, where everything can be worked out. Not something that's open to the public, something we're looking for as far as cultivation goes, and maybe testing labs.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
The 1,000-foot and 500-feet only apply to retail facilities.
Retail?
Yep.
Doesn't apply to the cultivation?
As the ordinance is written, it's only deals with retail facilities.
That answers my question.
Okay.
Thank you, I thought it was put in there. They took it out then, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fischette, do you have a question too as well? Uh, okay, I think he mentioned.
I figured that had to do with the 18- to 21-year-old people that were in there, but if it's just the retail, I'm okay with that.
All right. And again, this will be tomorrow, this will be next week of the city council meeting, so any concerns you have, Mr. Weezer, you can address them there, hopefully, and any questions that you might think of from tonight's meeting until then?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir?
My name is Bob Mayerson, I'm the CEO of Patriot Care. We operate, we're privileged to operate the medical marijuana dispensary on Industrial Avenue East, and we have a cultivation facility on Tanner and Lincoln. And just want to say that, I mean, by and large, well, first of all, I'd like to say that I'm going to be appearing before you at some point in the near future related to, to the adult-use license, and so, because that's part of the planning board process to come for a special permit, I'll be standing on either here or somewhere down here for that. I just want to say to you that if you have any questions now or at any point on anything related to this, you know, we've been operating here in Lowell for the last two and a half years. We have three licenses here in Massachusetts, we operate in Boston, we operate here in Lowell, and we're in Greenfield. Here in Lowell, it's our largest center because we do all of our cultivation here. We've probably become one of the largest employers in the city of Lowell. We have over 100 people working for us between the two facilities, our payroll's over three, about $3 million right now and growing. So we're really privileged and honored to be here. I think that the ordinance that the planning board has put together and the city, and the subcommittee has put together is, by and large, is very sensible. I mean, since you mentioned the 1,000-foot thing, I'll just say that I frankly thought it should have been a larger number than 1,000 feet, because, you know, the number of communities in the surrounding areas that are, that are implementing bans, I mean, the moratorium's only like a short-term thing, it only can last for whatever period of time, and there are a number of communities that have instituted bans in the surrounding areas, and what that'll do is force more people to come into a more concentrated area, and, you know, the question of whether you want to really be that concentrated, or whether you want to kind of start slower and then let it become more open as time goes on, but it is, I mean, it's set up as 1,000 feet, so it's, it is what it is, but that would be the only thing, that if I were going to change anything in it, that would be that. You know, and you were mentioning banking before, I'll just say that, you know, it's a little unclear at the moment on the rec side, but we enjoy banking, open banking here in Massachusetts, we take cash and debit cards, and our bank is, I don't like to talk about it publicly, because they don't, but they're, everybody knows who. about it publicly because they don't, but they're, everybody knows who it is. And they're very, you know, we have a very open relationship with them. Whether they will bank the recreational-only players is a question, whether they'll, you know, I think they will, you know, I think I've been told that they'll bank the medical players that they have if they adopt adult use, but we don't know that for certain yet either. I think it's very sensible to have, as you said, to have the chief of police really take the time, as we spent a lot of time with the chief of police and with, previously with Arthur Ryan when he was the chief, getting him comfortable with what we do. And I think if you talked to anybody today, they would say that they've had no issues with our operation. And we really, a lot of that comes back to that security plan and how we operate. So again, I just wanted to say, we're honored to be here in Lowell, and I'll be coming back to you. But if you have any questions ever along the way here with anything related to this, because you'll be getting a number of different groups coming, feel free to reach out. I'd be happy to give you my perspective at all. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that very much. Thank you. Because, you know, this is all new to us, too. And you've been in the business for a few years now, so I'm sure you've had to work at, especially in other cities and towns as well. Anybody else want to speak in regards to the ordinance? Yes. Take the microphone, just state your name, please, sir?
My name is Brian Belts. My address is 1467 Newburyport. I moved to the area in 2015, and I'm graduating from UMass Lowell this month. And I was looking at...
Congratulations.
Thank you. I really like the community, and me and some investors that I put together, you know, just out of sheer pounding the pavement and talking to people. We're looking at property in the Light Industrial District, which is just below the, what's the, our district, sorry. I'm not sure exactly what it stands for, but there's a lot of other stores in the area, and I think it would just be a great place to open up a business. And they have a lot of vacant buildings that I think would be occupied. I was just kind of curious why some of the light industrial districts were not zoned.
Christine, do you know why, by any chance, why some of the light industrials weren't, weren't taken into consideration? Was, I mean, it is, they still have it for, what, cultivation and testing, but not for medical treatment recreation in the light industrial?
Our light industrial and our general industrial zones aren't really conducive to retail uses. It's more of an industrial zone, which is why we chose cultivation and testing to be there and proposed to put the regional retail for the dispensaries, because not only is that obviously a retail district, but our regional retail districts are on major corridors in the city adjacent to highways. So we thought it was easy in, easy out.
So I don't know if that helped answer your question, but that was something to consideration, I think, that came through the council in the zoning subcommittee meeting.
There is one area on Stedman Street, zoned for light industrial, that has a lot of businesses, cafes, a dance studio. And there's a vacant building that's available for purchase. Now, it just seemed like a place where a lot of businesses were setting up, so just...
So if you'd like, you could address your concerns on that when it goes to the city council, because they dropped the final ordinance. We just give a recommendation whether we accept the ordinance or not. So if you have that concern, I would encourage you to show up at a city council meeting next week.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and then just tell them, you know, that's a concern you have, and whether they can, whether they'll admit part of it or not, that's, they approved the final ordinance. But thank you, sir, for your input. Appreciate it. Anybody else have anything to say? Any other board members, any follow-up? So what's the recommendation of the board? We can either make a recommendation to the city council, either in favor or against the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that vote in favor of the ordinance that was submitted with the amendments that were submitted to us today. And I would just, we've done this before, again, I would, we wrote it up or down, and I would make the recommendation we vote as submitted with the amendments. But just to highlight that if, in fact, the council would look to, if they would like to clarify or to bring their attention to either academic or dormitory housing, I think that's to further clarify for problems down the road, that's all. And again, that's just for their consideration.
I'll second that.
Motion is made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you vote yes, the motion is approved. And good luck, everybody, in the city council meeting for next week. Thank you all for your input. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along on the agenda, we have no other business at this time, Christine. Is that correct? And I'll just check to see if, any further comments from board members? Any other board members have any further comments?
Yeah, I just, relative to the historic board, our next meeting is in, it's the second Monday in June, I think it's the 11th or something like that. But I do want to just express appreciation for our administrator, Steve Stoll, for the great job he did with Doors Open, totally consumed with that over the past few weeks. Another successful year with Doors Open, which is a great community event. Want to recognize him.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I have in my hand the RFP from MassDOT for the next step in the Roke Bridge. I'm glad you're sitting down, Mr. Chairman, as I...
I've got something in the paper, and I figured out...
Yeah, that's what I read.
I know Jerry's on this one. Nepkong usually gives him the inside scoop before we get it.
So this is for the environmental permitting and for the 25% design submission. And actually, I did speak with Beverly Woods just to get clarification as well. And they are putting some sort of mechanism in place, too, for local public process, because the RFP seems a little light in that, and that should be part of the, part of the process so that you can get some local input. And just to put all of this in perspective, though, it appears that there wouldn't be a consultant in place until the end of the year, December or January of next year. And assuming it goes along as expected, this is probably a two-year process, what we're looking at here for the environmental permitting and the 25% design submission. But, and my understanding is, for this portion of it, MassDOT does have the funding for this portion of it. So that's important to understand. There still hasn't been any funding identified for the bridge itself, but again, we're still several years out before we start looking at that. But again, it is, it is progress at this point. This phase has to happen before we get to the next phase.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fischette. Any other board members have any comments? If not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you vote yes, motion carries. We adjourn. Good night, and thank you, everyone.